Good afternoon. We call the meeting in the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has a medium improper appetite.
Yes, sir, has.
Thank you very much. We will start our meeting now. Mr. Mosley, would you be so kind once again as to leave us in our prayer here now?
Yes, sir. Let us bow our heads. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for your beautiful and bountiful blessings. We thank you for all that you do. We pray for your divine wisdom and insight to spot and deliberate business for this community. Father God, we pray that you give us relief from the heat and provide us with rain. And we pray for those who are going through the storm, pray that you be with them and strengthen them. These and all the blessings we thank you for in advance, for us in Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, kind sir. As a matter of information, Commissioner Gillett is traveling and Commissioner Walden will not be with us today. Commissioner Gillett is going to be dialed in. He's already dialed in, and we're expecting Commissioner Stevens in a minute to join us. All right. But we do have a call. Proclamation, Gulligici Nation, 2023 Appreciation Week.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You know, for the last several years, we've recognized Gulligici Nation Appreciation Week. So this is a request to also do that again. It'll be the week of July 29th through August the 5th, 2023.
All right. You don't have to read it. Thank you, sir. Are we, are they coming to pick that up?
They will come pick it up. I'll get you to say it.
All right. If Jerry Anderson is not here, hope she's on her way. We'll hold off on that. We'll go right in then to financial reports. Ms. Samantha.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to report on the county's April and May 2023 financial statements. It was my intention to give the April report during last month's mid-meeting, but we did get a little sidetracked with the budget that day. But if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, can I run through both months simultaneously, just highlighting?
Side by side?
Is that okay?
You putting us to the test today?
That's fine.
I'm rolling with it.
The end of April, we have collected approximately eighty-five percent of our budgeted revenues. And this went up to May of ninety-one percent. We have expended approximately eighty-five percent of our budgeted expenditures through the end of April and up to ninety-eight percent through the end of May. At the end of April, we currently have seven point eight months of operating expenditures in our unreserved fund balance. And this was seven months at the end of May.
Since we're doing two, slow down just a little bit for me.
Okay, yes, sir. This, we are slightly above where we were last year during these two months. That had seven months for April and six point eight months of reserve for May.
How, where do we attribute that to? I'm trying to think what.
What caused that increase? Uh.
What have we done so well that we?
I think it's just the timing. Yes, sir. The timing of some of our tax payments, it was kind of, we received more a little later this year than we had last year. Looking at the departmental expenditures for the general fund, there are a few that are running slightly ahead of schedule. The Elections Department reported in April over budget due to the purchase of voting hubs earlier in the year. This department is running a little ahead of schedule. However, by the end of May, they are back in line with their annual budget. The Public Information Department is showing slightly over budget for both April and May due to rising food costs that were experienced for the Service Awards Luncheon that was held back in December. The General Administration Department is the department where we pay our annual dues to the CGRDC. This, this will show as a negative variance all year because we make the payment each year in July. And, but by the time we get to June, it'll be zero. We don't anticipate any more expenditures for the fiscal year. The Circuit-Wide Public Defender, this is a result of timing of payments. We kind of paid ahead on some of this. So for April, the overage reported was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, but this decreased down to sixty-nine thousand for the month of May. We do not anticipate this department to exceed their budget by June. For Department 3320, Bureau of Professional Standards.
Commissioner Stevens, we're looking at, she's comparing both months. So put April and May side by side.
I got them.
You got it?
I got it.
Sorry about that. Department 3320, the slight overage in April was for the renewal of a lens lock body camera contract and the purchase of radios. However, by the end of May, this department fell back in line with their budget. For May, 4220, the Road Department purchased a tractor and a boom mower, which caused this department to go over their target budget for the month. However, the department is not over their budget for the year and should hopefully fall back in line by the end of June. The Community Services Department shows a slight variance for April and May due to purchases for the Annual Wellness Fair that was held back in October. This is also a timing issue. We do not expect this department to go over budget for the year. The same thing is true for the Conservation Administration Department. This is where we pay every October our payment to the Georgia Alabama Land Trust. Each month, the calculated amount over budget decreases the closer we get to June. For April, the overage was sixteen hundred, and by May, it had fallen to eight hundred. And this department should not exceed budget for the year. The largest budget variance is other financing uses. This is the result of the county drawing down on the 2022 bonds that was issued last June. Because the bond funds were recorded in the general fund last fiscal year, we must also record the bond draws in the general fund. By the end of A, April, by the end of April, we had drawn down three point three million on the bonds. And by the end of May, we had drawn down a total of four point six million. These drawdowns were made to reimburse the county for costs associated with the new EMS building, the solid waste recycling center, and Miller Park Fire Station. The county will continue to draw down on the bonds as the projects continue through December 1st, at which time the remaining proceeds will be distributed to the county. Okay, moving on to solid waste. The month of April, the solid waste has a net income of approximately four hundred and eighty-four thousand. To date, we have collected over ninety-nine percent of budgeted revenues and have spent approximately eighty-seven percent of budgeted expenditures. Similarly, for May, we had a net income of six hundred and twenty-two thousand for solid waste. But I would like to point out that a portion of this revenue that solid waste is reporting is what we call the other financing source. Since the gum branch recycling center is a solid waste project, when we draw down on the bonds for the general fund, we transfer some of that money over through a transfer out to solid waste. So it shows as income in one fund and an expense in another fund. But despite all of that, if I back out those other financing sources for solid waste, at the end of May, we still have a net income, operating income of a hundred and sixty-four thousand. For both April and May, there were no solid waste departments that exceeded their budgets. And the same is true for the county's special revenue funds. There are currently no departments over budget for April or May. Flipping over to the sales tax reports, the county received our last sales tax six distribution at the end of April totaling one point two million. This was our highest month of collection yet. At the end of April, we have collected three point two million more than what was budgeted for the current fiscal year and a total of seven point seven million since SPOS six began. Also, in May, we received our first SPOS seven, sales tax seven, distribution, and it was a little over a million dollars. This is a hundred and seventeen thousand more than we budgeted for, and it's off to a great start. And last but not least, T-SPOS. We received one point two million dollars for the month of April and nine hundred and sixty-five thousand for May. We have collected over twenty-eight point six million since the T-SPOS began, and it has brought in an excess of one point two million in revenue from what was originally expected. And I'm sorry to rush through all that, but that concludes my April and May financial reports, unless you guys have any questions.
Not a question, but don't I recall our, our SPOS projected goal was fifty-four million, SPOS six?
Yes.
Fifty-four and SPOS six.
And we're sixty-one?
Yes, yes, sir. Yep.
Now, I don't remember what T-SPOS.
Let me see if it's on my schedule.
Brown, walk me through it.
Sixty-four million.
So are the books closed on SPOS six as far as revenue is concerned?
As far as revenue is concerned, they're on.
Yeah, because I know the state runs behind, so.
Right. We've received our last check for SPOS.
What was the T-SPOS?
T-SPOS was fifty-four million.
Fifty-four is the same.
Oh, no, that's SPOS six. I apologize. T-SPOS. Oh, there it is.
And we're in mid.
Fifty-four plus sixteen.
Mid-cycle for T-SPOS.
Yes, sir. We are in, we're in year two, actually.
Two.
Actually, three. Year three, halfway through year three. Yes, sir.
And that was for, T-SPOS was for how many years?
T-SPOS was five years or six years, Ms. Brown? I want, five is in my mind, but I may be wrong.
But really, it's with the conclusion of the projected number.
Five years. Five years or until you reach of the net proceeds.
That one does cap.
Right.
All right. So.
Yes, sir.
I just have a few questions. Thank you for, for going through this expeditiously.
Yes, sir.
But I do have a quick question. Back with light item number fifty-five hundred, Community Services, what, what all is entail in that? Is that just the stuff that we do here at county internally? Would like our, our health fair?
Yes. Wellness program and the Live 360 that we're going into.
Right, so that's just community services.
It's internally to the county. Yes, sir.
Can we get grant funded? ACCG picks up.
Seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred, I believe of that, yeah.
Absolutely. ACCG. All right, and then?
The Employee Awards Luncheon, isn't that, isn't that, do I remember that correctly?
I think that was in public, fifteen seventy.
Yeah.
Public information.
Right. I guess I would just send clarification on that. And then, I had a question about the SPOS as well. I know we were talking about the, the, I guess, the conservative number that we came up with SPOS six, which I'm, I'm happy that, that we exceeded that. And you were saying that in April, the month of April, that was our largest collection?
Yes, sir.
As of date from SPOS one all the way to?
From this fiscal year. But if I ran it back, it probably would be the highest.
I'm almost certain too.
Okay.
Right, and that number was one, you said how much again?
One million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Okay. And then the previous, and then you were saying the following month was?
For SPOS seven, it was nine hundred and, oh, I went in the wrong month. Let's see. It was one million and forty thousand.
Okay, and that was for the month of May?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just trying to track because, because normally, I think normally summertime, people, do it go up or is it down? Because I know a lot of people travel too.
Usually been, and we can, we'll run you a graph, but usually from what I remember is spring, summer, and then around.
Ball in.
Yeah, around November, December.
Right, right. Especially with, with the influx of us having opportunity to receive the online sales taxes as well, right?
Has that been a change? Don't I recall one time the Christmas month was the highest at one time?
Was.
Right.
Yeah, so that's changed too. We spend all year long now.
Yes, sir.
Shop all year long.
And I could just imagine once we get that family entertainment center in here over the summertime, how that'd roll. Oh, I'm gonna plug it. Definitely am. So, right, I was just trying to, but I wouldn't, and I think the rest of the commissioners would like to see some, some type of graph.
Okay, sure.
To try to see the trends looking.
Yes, sir.
Right, but that's good stuff though.
And it's, it lags from when we receive it in our account, you know, a couple of months because it, okay.
But I will say this, when I read the reports about the state's sales revenue, they're talking about theirs as less than what they projected.
Oh, goodness.
So I'm not sure if ours is going to mirror that at some time or not.
Right.
But that's what the state is saying when their reports.
Theirs has been back a little bit.
Maybe they was just a little bit more aggressive on the numbers than we were.
Hopefully.
And that's what I was saying. I, I think even with, with the SPOS seven, we were still pretty conservative.
We talked about it.
I think we kind of tried to figure it out as much as possible then too. So I'm, I'm excited to see what, what those numbers come up to be as well, so.
Absolutely.
Chair. Samantha and Mr. Brown. Last meeting, I think we talked about some money. And I don't know if you all would know if that money has been turned over to the proper agency and what was the amount?
I don't remember.
Three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-two thousand and some change. Absolutely.
Those efforts, so. Good news. Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions for Mr.?
On the agenda for finance is a budget amendment request by the Sheriff's Department. And Chief Hagan and Sheriff Bowman are here in case you have any questions.
Good afternoon, Chairman, as well as all the esteemed Commissioners, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mosley. I'm coming today asking for a budget amendment. Ms. Natalie Lopez serves as the sheriff, has hired her to be kind of community coordinator, to have a part of our policing profile, have a community person involved. So we, the Sheriff's Department has a presence in our community to show more than just the rest. We have, and I'm sure you all have seen some of the events we've had, especially over the summer, the bike rodeo, which we deem to be very successful. The Sheriff's Day Camp, which did a lot with the kids, got them to the Mighty Eighth Air Force Museum and different things. So it was a ter- great turnout in those type of events, the back-to-school events, which I was able to spend some time with the chairman. That was very good. So we would love to keep her, so what the sheriff decided to take a deputy's position. And she's a, considered a contract worker, so there will be no benefits in that. And with that, I'm asking that we can move those funds to the line item that will, and, and those, that position is already budgeted to us, but we're just taking and putting, instead of a deputy in that position, putting a, Ms. Lopez in that position, who to us is just as vital because it's part of community policing. And that amount is forty-four thousand, excuse me, I can be, nine thirty-three twelve. And that will carry us out in that position to the rest of the fiscal year.
All right, any questions for Chief?
No, I just want to understand that we're gonna move a, reduce to regular employee position, and then we're going to increase the contract labor. That's it.
It won't be, no, increase is, is even money is moved. It's just a change of line items. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chair, just, just to get some clarification. By moving this over from, from an employee status over to, to a labor contractor, technically, would the county be saving money because we won't have to worry about the insurance and, and all the benefits and all of that, right?
That's correct.
Uniforms and guns.
Yeah, yeah.
And everything else.
No benefits, none of that.
Stripped down. That's a good, that's a good move.
I was just, I was just making it for the record, basically, you know, because, trust me, I, I understand the difference in, in that, so.
Sheriff, you wanna add something, or you just coming?
I just wanna add just a little bit. Chief did a wonderful job. Council appreciated all the support we've been getting from y'all.
The Commissioners.
Commissioners, I'm sorry, I just came from a council meeting. Don't wanna slice y'all in any way. So we had this great relationship. We don't wanna do that. It's just an honor and a pleasure to serve this community. And whatever we can do to make things better between the citizens and the police department and the sheriff office, we're willing to do. We're doing a lot of different things that never been done in Liberty County before, but we learn all these things when we go to training. And we bring it back to our community to try to make our community better. That was the reason why you see some of the golf carts that we purchased, because if you look at every sheriff office or police department throughout the state of Georgia or throughout the United States, they all have something to contribute to the community to help with the kids. When the kids feel like they're more involved with the sheriff office, I mean, that makes, we can get some. If we want to, when they graduate from high school, all the ones don't, don't, don't go to college or go to trade school, they wanna become police officers, firemen, and whatever, we can keep them right here in the community, because if we have the people that live here, so Ms. Johnny have a, a altercation in her house, and she see Ms. Sarah's son come up to the house, that's gonna help de-escalate some of those problems. So we are working real hard to recruit a lot of people from our community to serve as, as officers. That way, they can understand what we do, how we do it, and they won't be afraid to approach police officers. That's why I've strived so hard to make sure we got the S, the SRO program in Liberty County. It is something I know that's gonna help us break that stigma between us against them. They'll understand what we do and why we do the things we do. Our job here is not to lock up everybody in the community. Our job is to educate the community. And if the arrests have to be made, then we're gonna do what we need to do. But we doing everything by the Constitution of Georgia and what we are sworn to do. So thank y'all for supporting us. Anything that we can do, idea that you might have that we don't know about, please let us know, and we'll see if we can do that. So thank y'all. I like to thank my chief, he's been a god since, since I've been here, so thank y'all so much. That's all we have.
You know, a little while ago, I saw Sheriff Wilton. I saw Sheriff Wilton strutting his stuff on TV about some, a similar kind of program that he's doing in, in Chatham County, so that seems to be the trend now to. And listen, and I will say this, you talk about growing your own, I, we are proud of our, what our fireman, fire department is doing, growing their own, so. It does, it does matter when you can have your local people to, to become trained and then be a part of your local, whether it be fire or police department, it doesn't make a big difference, because they know the people, they know the community, so. So we, we see your investment. We see your investment.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All the fairs, your hands, please, or say aye. All right, gentlemen.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate y'all.
Let's see if you can grow some engineers. You can't find them. They're not growing on the vine.
I've heard that.
So we've been, I'm down two engineers, and I've got three or four head hunting companies looking for me and got advertisements, and it's just hard to find somebody. I'm interviewing a girl from Colorado tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
And you got more work than you can shake a stick at?
Everybody does. Everybody does, which is a blessing.
It is.
It's also a curse, because you don't get to sleep. So I'll try to run through things pretty quickly here. Gum Branch Solid Waste and Vintage Center is pretty much done. A few little odds and ends they're working on. We're working on the final pay request for that. It looks, once they turned it black with asphalt, looked a lot better. It looks really good. Water system, Lewis Fraser Road, they finally got a little bit more materials, and they were out there this morning putting in some more pipe. So I don't know how far the pipe's gonna go that they got, but they're working on and putting, putting in the ground what they have. Water system west of the railroad, we had one guy came to the pre-construction meeting, but he did not present a proposal to date. We have already got another advertisement out in the paper to show up next week. And we're gonna take bids on the twenty-ninth of August. It gives us a thirty-day advertising time.
Are you optimistic about?
I am.
Okay.
So some of the guys that we would nor, are, are usual suspects were tied up with bonding capacities for other things at the time, and so they weren't really in a position. Now they're in a better position to go ahead and do that. So I think it's gonna work. I think we, you know, we're, we're really kind of working hard to get the word out to make sure we get good proposals on this one. And I'll, to be honest with you, I've been, would've been scared to say, hey, on a sole, a sole supplier for over a three-million-dollar job too. So it might've worked out better. Dorchester Village Road relocation, they're finally able to make a little bit of work on that. However, we are having trouble with the guy that's building some of the warehouses with the number of dump trucks going through there. The sheriff is out there working to, to try to control that. The contractor told Paul Zekman that he was cutting down on the number of trucks that he was trying to, trying to help work. They are putting sweepers out there. We've got calls into them to make sure that they're using flagmen and doing the things that they should be doing to make our citizens safe, because it was a little out of hand, and we're trying to make sure we have as, as much control on it as we can.
Trent, just to add to that, I was down there about an hour and a half ago, and between the project site and back to the dirt pit, I met ten trucks just that quick. So I don't know when he's planning on cutting back. And the road is, there's no gravel holly coming out of that, where you're coming out of the pit. So you're bringing all of that dirt up on the road.
Yes, sir. I think that Mr. Zekman is trying to work with them to get their construction exits in place. So I, I'll double check with him in the morning to make sure what the status is on that.
And also, we need to keep a close watch on right past the Devendoff Farm Gate. We've got a drop in the road right there. I don't know if a pipe is there and it's crushing it or what, but it's getting worse.
Yes, we had some dips that we've had in the road, and what we're, what we did today is I had my crews out there today, I don't know if you saw them there or not, but we have these long levels that we use when we're checking asphalt and shims to find out what the depths of the depressions are. And we were out there today measuring to see where we are. And it'll also give us a tool to know as we get through this, what's happening with the road, and we kind of know who's working on it so that we can take whatever action we need, whatever action we're able to take. But we are, we are trying to, we're, are trying to keep a handle on that, because not only do we go measure it, we took GPS shots so I know where I measured, so I can go back to that same spot again.
So actually, what's the process, between you and Mr. Brown? What's the process if a company damages the road? How do we, what do we have in place to recoup that? Do we have anything in place?
I, I'm not sure legally. That'd be a Kelly question for you. If they're on the normal road surface versus coming out of the pit and cracking the edges of the road and things like that, but traveling on the public road, I, I'm not sure. We, we would have to check if it becomes necessary. I think, you know, first thing we do, obviously go back to contractor, but as far as legally pressing it, I'm not, I'm not sure. We'd have to ask Kelly.
So if we don't, then it falls right back on the taxpayers as of right now?
Yeah, again, I think I defer to Kelly, but I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if you're able to enact an ordinance that on normal public roadways that are supposed to withstand whatever the weight limits are, and it's not posted, that you would have a legal avenue to go back on anybody, really, for traveling that road. But I, but I would wanna check. I think, I think we ought to check, find out. Yes, we ought, I mean, and we're prepared to check and find out. That's the reason he's measuring and taking depths, so we can, we can calculate if something is wrong and try to pursue it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Maybe a little, a day or two late of a, a baseline, but Lisa gives us somewhat of a baseline.
Okay.
Okay. Middle Park Fire Station's moving along okay. We did do proof roll on some of the parking lot. Earlier this week, there were some weak spots. They're supposed to be recompacting and getting the subgrade a little bit better. And we're hoping that we're gonna redo the proof roll next week. The Island's Highway Box Culvert, the bid was supposed to be today. We had
Go back to the middle, excuse me, go back to the middle.
Okay.
The fire station. It seems like on that, this particular project, the longest part of it was putting up the, what, the siding or whatever you call it, paneling? Is that the first time we've ever used that kind of paneling?
I don't know that.
In any project? I mean, who, who, who actually picked that? Because that, that section of it looked like it's been a hole back. It takes a long time to put up that side.
Yeah, I, I tell you, that won't be our biggest holdup. Our biggest holdup's gonna be getting the site completed. So really, that hasn't slowed anything down. I mean, it didn't slow down any other site. We've used similar type paneling before, not the exact same thing, but it's a sliding grid. In fact, siding that was put on EMS building down there is the same. It's just a different paneling system.
Commissioner Stevens, it's on the exterior of the building?
Exterior.
Yeah, the, the white that you see going up?
Right.
Yeah.
This'll leave.
Okay, we're good? And the Island's Highway Box Culvert repair, we did, we have two people that are proposing on this job. They did come to a pre-construction conference two weeks ago. We talked about the project in depth. They had some questions. We issued an addendum to address their questions. They did ask for two additional weeks to put the proposals together to make sure that they adequately covered the items that they asked about. And a lot of it, also, this, this is a job that is, does have MWBE requirements, and so they, Mr. Lisa was here and told them how to meet the requirements, so they're trying to make sure we got that covered. So that got pushed out two weeks. So that, that'll open on August third. Working on a water plan. Don't have a real big update on that right now. We're kind of waiting on a little bit of information I need to get from Thomas and Hutton to be taking the next steps on that. I do have, well, I guess I don't have it. Chairman, I'm gonna need to get you to sign our permit for MPDES. I thought I had brought it with me today. I was gonna try to get you to sign it, but I'll try to get you to sign it sometime tomorrow. But we, I do need to send that on to EPD. Basically, it stays the same as what we've done for the last twenty years. The, the roundabout at Highway Seventeen and Barrington Ferry Road, our environmental crews have already been out, looked at the wetlands, they've done their portion of it. Our archaeologist and historian is scheduled to be out here the first week in August, so that'll take us through our next step on our historic stuff. We have stuff, we gave, had to give them a calendar or a schedule, so we got the schedule to them. We are finishing up some of our calculations to send to what we call the, the raid team, which is the roundabout guy. And so that should be going back first part of next week. So that, that project's moving along like it should. I have West Cemetery Road. I'm gonna leave a little set with Mr. F. Probably wanna try to bid this part out first part of August. I do need to talk to Clinton and a couple of guys out there, and there's a couple pieces of right-of-way I need to get. The way the pa- the way the paved road ends and then the dirt road goes on, it kind of jogs. And I gotta kind of get a little bit of a right-of-way to straighten that out and make that work. I can't let my road jog like that. So I will be talking to Clinton about that in the morning, because some of it is his property, so. Lewis Fraser Road over the Peacock Canal. We are supposed to be turned loose to do right-of-way acquisition this month. We're at the end of the month, and I hadn't gotten the word from them yet. It was supposed to be last month, and now it's this month, and so we're just waiting for them to turn us loose. We're probably gonna need to get a little help on getting the right-of-way, somebody that can do the DOT right-of-way acquisition the way you're supposed to do it through the DOT process. The Lewis, the Limerick Road overlay, the contracts are being prepared. We're trying to get a schedule for the guys to get out there. We'll have a pre-construction on that soon. And I don't know what happened on my report. I had a whole two more sentences after that, and I must've deleted it, because I normally don't have dead-end sentence like that. And I was like.
Did you do it or someone else?
So I'm not a very good, I'm not a very good secretary.
Thought you want Commissioner Jones to just fill in the blank.
But now, we, Commissioner Jones and I rode last week, and we looked at several places where we need some speed hunts there in Lake George and Woodland Lakes, and so we're getting the prices from the contractor while he's there to do it. And that, we know where we're gonna put them, so we just kind of gotta get the prices from him. I'll present that to you guys as soon as we have those prices, and that way we kind of know when the guy's gonna be there too. I, I put Davidson Select Street on her. All this is an Allenhurst project. Commissioner Gillard likes to kind of know about it. We did get out there with the contractor this week. They've done a lot of the deep repair. They've put the surface treatment on top of it. The surface treatment is gonna help the crack control from, all the cracks from coming through. Some of the cracks are gonna come through. Not gonna stop all of them, but it's gonna stop a lot. Not going to stop all of them, but it's going to stop a lot of them. But their asphalt plant, they bought the old, uh, East Coast Asphalt Plant and they're having trouble keeping it running. So they, uh, they were trying to pave this week and then it got delayed and they were going to try to pave some Saturday and now they're not going to pave Saturday, so we're working with them to get that asphalt down. And once they get that done, we'll be in good shape. Now, that leads me to Bill Carter Road. Because same contractor's doing Davidson Slet is doing Bill Carter Road for us. So the intent was for them to leave Bill Car, leave Davidson Slet and go to Bill Carter Road. They've got the signs up and everything. If they're not able to get to it next week, I'm going to ask them to wait. I'm, I'm going to be gone the first two weeks in August. And, um, the time that they're going to run into problems is when they do the full depth asphalt. And they do the grinding and everything and, and I need to be here to answer questions if they run into issues on that. So, uh, we've, we've had this understanding with them for the last two months, trying to make these calendars work. So if they get started on a Monday, we'll be in great shape. We'll get it done. If they're not able to get started on a Monday, we'll be the middle of August when we do it.
All right. I heard what you said about your two weeks and I understand that. But with those two weeks that you are gone, if they're ready, that means we could have possibly come back and give them two more weeks, uh, extension later, if possible. I mean, because they can't
It could be that.
If the weather's good, they can probably move along pretty good.
Yeah, they could move on pretty good and, you know, I, I don't, they're pretty early in their contract and the amount of time that it's going to take to do that, I'm not sure with this contractor that we're going to have that issue. On Davidson Slet, uh, when we had the pre-construction conference, they were within two weeks of when they said they were going to be there. And so they're, they're on track. And they've been talking to me about their schedule and trying to make this work. So I just kind of wanted you to know why, if they don't do it this week, that it's going to be the next two weeks. I mean, we could let them do it. I just, I don't want to run into issues and then nobody would be able to answer. And then that could lead to worse problems.
I'll be back to see.
Yes, sir. I need to come make a presentation of everything I see when I come back. Davidson Slet, Claudia Lane, we're, uh, EPD, uh, waiting on EPD approval. And, uh, Island's Highway, um, uh, we're waiting on our environmental guys. They're working on it now. Other than that, that's about it. Longer than I should have, but
Mr. Chairman, I had a quick, uh, Mr. Brown, we need to add back on Mary Todd Road, like the first phase?
Yes, ma'am. I will have
Money and the surveying and all, I believe, and now we need to
I'll add it back on the next one and I'll show you where we are during the
Yes, yeah, that, that, because that would be my next project if
Yes, ma'am.
Funding is available.
Yes, ma'am. I got it.
I'm done.
Anything on here about, uh, one nineteen and Barrington Ferry, the roundabout? Or did I overlook it?
No, sir. Yes, we don't have anything going on one nineteen Barrington Ferry Crossroads. We don't have anything going on right there. There's not any funding for it at this point. Uh, the Department of Transportation hadn't issued any funding and right now we're trying to work on this other roundabout.
Seventeen and Barrington Ferry, Lewis Fraser?
Yes, sir. But right now there's nothing going on, is why it's not on my calendar, on my
Okay, uh, okay.
Remind me, I'd like something to be going on.
Is that in the, um, it is in the Riceburg City Limits. That's in the Riceburg City Limits.
It is.
Yeah.
I just encourage us to have some conversation with
Right, that's what I
Mayor and people who there, there are some apprehensions already.
Yeah. The mayor and the two, the mayor and the two churches and the store.
Yes, we need to make sure we sit down.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm hearing I'm hearing a lot of, uh,
Negative.
About what's going on at Flemington right now. Curious with the changes, that's, it's, yeah, it's not being received right with, even, even though everybody knows it's going to be good in the end to the benefit of the community in.
It's just that path to get there.
I even heard the mayor saying that he could have been better informed. Yeah, so let's make sure we do that with the
Yeah, and then, and that was actually a full DOT control project. So yes, sir, I, I, I'll be glad to kind of, and probably what I ought to do is go make some presentations to them to kind of let them know what's going on and keep them informed. So I'll be glad to do that.
And, um,
Did I not say that?
No, you didn't.
All right. Little sidetrack there and sometimes you get a little nervous. It's like, oh no, did I cover everything?
Phase two?
Phase two of, uh, the
Of phase one, page two. Third, Elm Street, Winhaven. I, I, I know you, you just
Elm Street, Winhaven.
Talking to me about it, but
Yeah, we didn't get any bids on that. Uh, the contractors that are our usual suspects. Even the one that was doing the, uh, Gil Park for us told us that he wasn't, they weren't going to be able to get to it until the October timeframe. And, you know, one of their thoughts was, listen, you know, I, I, they don't want to put a price on something with the volatility of the price of the concrete that it's going to be two or three months out. So they chose not to bid at the time. And I've talked to Siddle, I've talked to, uh, Ty Swindell and, uh, one other, and they're ready to bid now. So it's going in paper. Uh, it'll bid on August twenty ninth, same time we rebid with the, uh, uh, water system.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I have some more projects I need to put on there now, but would it be better off to combine this with, with the other sidewalk projects? Or since this is already rolling?
I think, I think the size of this one is a good size.
It should be.
Yeah, it's, it's a good size and, and it's, it's a nice size for them as far as bonding capabilities go. Um, that way we don't push ourselves up to a bigger contractor that has higher bonding capabilities. So we could go ahead and put out the, the next phase whenever we're ready.
And then, uh, also in the, in next, uh, couple of weeks, not too far out, can we set up a, a meeting with myself, uh, you and, uh, Mr. Cliff about the NWBE and the
Yes, sir.
Where we at?
Yes, sir.
Where we need to be.
So you and me and you and
And whoever wants to be there, absolutely. But I, I know that, that's something that I'm not saying that we kicking down the road, but I just wanted to see where we at since we first implemented that, Mr. Chair, if that's okay? And see how, how we are moving from now.
Yes, sir.
Kind of like a, a progress report or?
Progress report to see, see where, where we could do and what we could do better.
Certainly. Make that an agenda item.
Absolutely.
Have her come present.
That's even better.
Okay, now just something we want Mr. Lisa to
Absolutely. I, I, I want to see from, uh, because, I mean, we, we just talked about financing, uh, a couple of minutes ago. And I just want to see how effective our policy that, that we put in place. Right.
Yes, sir.
Because you know numbers don't lie, so I, I just want to see how much participation that we have really been, been getting and what we expect, you know, and be honest, for the ten years, it's, it's different. So, I mean, it might be something that we might even look at, uh, a larger percentage.
Maybe, um,
Something.
Based on his schedule, maybe mid-month of, uh, August or, or September, based on his schedule.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown, you want me to try to?
I'll touch, I'll touch.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Brown, Trent. At the bottom of your page here, you got Claudia Lane. And, uh, Mr. Brown, has the money been, has the money been located to do this project with? Because
No, sir. Um, well, let me back up. I, I'm, I'm thinking about a report I looked at actually in the ARPA fund the other day where we had money appropriated to that. And I do think, I'll, let me double check, but I do think that, um, Commissioner Gage on the phone, that he agreed to basically use some road funds to transfer over to help with that project. And so I, I, I do believe, I do believe it has.
Okay.
I'll double check. Let me double check.
All right.
Who, who, who say you can't be in two places at one time?
Our joy says I've agreed to transfer some money.
That's for your cue to come in.
And then also, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I, I know in the past we, we asked Mr. Mr. Long to, you know, put the districts that the projects are going. Would it be too much for me to request that? Because since we have so many different, I guess, financing options now, you know, we have SPOS, we have LMIG and everything. Is there any way possible we could kind of know which projects are LMIG, which projects are, are coming from SPOS and anti-SPOS?
Or a combination of?
Or a combination, right, to kind of help us know where
Yes, sir, that would be fine. I mean, it would be pretty simple for me to put, you know, like I have, some of them where I don't have a district. A lot of times there
Countywide.
Countywide. And, uh, to be honest with you, sometimes I forget to put that on there, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I remember what this, I had to remind you a couple of times, but it's fine. We got there.
But, um, but I could also just add in parentheses how the project is funded. You know, it's got LMIG money, ARPA money, sales tax.
Or if the city is
LMIG, all that.
It's got city money in it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be easy to do.
There we go.
I can do that.
I appreciate the second.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of LMIG, we're going to discuss that.
Yes, sir, Trent.
Yes, sir.
I think he's looking at it and, because we got the notice for this coming year.
Sure, I was going to try to put together some, a list of opportunities for you and then let you guys give me your thoughts and not trying to tell you what to do, just give you some opportunities and then you can tell me what you want me to do.
You know, I, 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 I think we should always respect the recommendation of the county engineer that, you're right, that we just have the discrepancy to, to modify. But certainly you the SMB, you know, so
Well, yeah, sure.
So, so bring it to us and then, then we'll get the red pen out.
Yes, sir. I, I, I like, uh, what Mr. Brown sings was, you know, he's a bus driver. He's driving the bus where you tell him to go. I'm going to be the bus driver.
Certainly we use your recommendation. You should know these rules out of the back of your hand.
I do. I've been up and down them a lot. All right.
All right.
Thanks, sir. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Joey, I, um, I couldn't hardly hear anything. I, I could hear you, but I, I couldn't hear anyone else. But I, I did hear part of, I think, the only thing that I, that was clear was, um, Commissioner Thrift made a, a motion and I don't, don't know, but I, I have been here where we've had the commissioners call in. I remember Eddie called in and he was allowed, he, I guess he could hear clearer than I could in my, in my truck. But I, I, I didn't, I thought I was going to kind of be interactive and I could vote, but I, I wouldn't have voted anyhow because I couldn't even hear what the, what the motion was and I didn't have the agenda with me, but it was real. It's like someone was talking, the, the whole thing was like it was garbled, like it was underwater. I don't know if it's my truck with my Bluetooth
Yeah, and I'll say
Or what, but, um, but I, I could, I could hear you.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I was muted the, the whole time and I, if it was something that I could have, we only tuck, tuck action on just the one thing that, um, that Connet, the, the budget amendment, that's the only thing?
That's it.
It is.
Okay. I, I heard Connet said I make a motion.
That's it.
But I didn't know what it was and
That's it.
That was it, so, okay.
Uh, I, I, I know what happened.
No, you don't.
Mr. Chairman, updates?
Just a couple of things. Uh, if you will, first, uh, there is a back to school rally I want to make you aware of. In fact, uh, this company called ESG is sponsoring it, uh, this Saturday on the twenty second from eleven to one. This is going to be at Rebecca's Place across from First Calvary Missionary Baptist Church. So, um, big, big event. I think a lot of folks are scheduled to come there. The other thing is we did get notice from ACCG that their legislative conference takes place October eleventh through the thirteenth this year. And it is time again to designate your voting delegate for that.
I'm not going to be able to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unless any someone else was going, I, I won't be able to.
I yield to him being delegated.
And really, Mr. Chairman, that's all, that's all I have. I think y'all got a notice on the ribbon cutting date for the, uh, EMS station, which is the eighteenth at ten o'clock. So we look forward to that. They moved into that last week.
And the Boys and Girls Club, uh,
Tomorrow at twelve.
I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Jordy Bacon.
Brown, Mr. Moses, on the salary adjustments, how was it? Was it well received or? Is there any hiccup with it?
Chairman, we are, I mean, Mr. Commissioner Stevens. For the most part, Commissioner Stevens, Stevens, it has been well received. There are a couple of areas where we are having some discussions.
All right. Something else, sir?
Well, only the agreement to the conduct municipal election for Allenhurst, which is next. Yes, sir. And this is that standard, uh, agreement to conduct it for Allenhurst? That, that you've seen before. Recommended by the Board of Elections, overviewed the contract.
Compensate us accordingly.
Yes, sir.
This in November along with the others, okay? Mr. Chairman, I make a pro, a motion that we approve the agreement to conduct municipal elections with the city of Allenhurst.
Motion on second, we accept the agreement to conduct the city of Allenhurst's election this year, uh, along with the other cities. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Thank you. Mr. Dodd, I, I asked him to swing back through to talk to us a little bit about, about the heat factor. And since we're live streaming, he can speak to the people. I, I heard this morning, my sister works at, uh, with Pastor Deason's on the radio and, and she told me this morning, there were several calls, people calling and trying to find fans.
Yes, sir. We had, uh, I know Michelle Rickerson, she came over and borrowed our, uh, cooling fans for the, um, farmer's market. Yes, sir. So we do have a heat advisory out until one minute, till six P M. tonight. What that means is basically they're looking at the heat index to go up to one eleven. So over one ten, you're going to get a heat advisory after July first. Um, there possibly could be one tomorrow also. So we're just advising and we're putting it on our Facebook page and we're sending it out to all the department heads. We're just advising, you know, check on your neighbors. You got to take precaution in this heat because it can kill you or cause seriously, uh, damage. Um, check on your neighbors. Don't leave your kids, your pets in the, the vehicles. You just got to be smart. If you're working outside, make sure you do it in the morning, do it in the evening if, if possible. If not, you know, drink the water, drink the fluids and, and let your body cool down, get in the air conditioning. Or if you can, get, get into some shaded area. Along with the, the heat, you have the chances of, uh, some strong thunderstorms coming in the area also. So, you know, we're, we're prepared for that and if you have a emergency, just call nine one one and we'll get the people out there. But, you know, you got to pay attention to the straight line, straight line winds when you get those strong thunderstorms coming in.
Thank you. I want you to share that with the, with the general public. And this morning I was kind of disheartened here that some senior citizens don't have A C. And they were looking, some of them had like one fan, but were looking for a second fan, that kind of thing, so.
And if they, if they call our office at, um, at our office, I mean, we can maybe see if we can reach out to some of our partners and, and, and maybe get some. I'm not promising anything, but, you know, it's an option.
Be smart about it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for keeping us abreast.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd have your sister contact me, if I could, if they got them in the stores, I, I could get some through my organization.
All right, I'll sure tell her.
Yeah, tell her to give me a call and if they got them at the stores, I'll get them.
Just want to say to the Frazier family, graduation in order and a way of having a street name after your father and, uh, as a part of your family members, Mr. Commissioner Frazier.
Thank you so much. Normally, uh, you all know, it's not difficult for me to speak. Normally, you all know, it's not difficult for me to speak, especially in public. But today was a little emotional for me today. And then on top of that, they wanted me to speak after my godfather, Representative Val Williams, which I've done before. And also speak after my mom, which I've done before. Today was the first time I was asked to speak after both of them. And I was short on words, so. But again, to, to Commissioner Stevens and the rest of my commissioners, it's, it's definitely appreciated. And, and on top of that, it's not just because, it was emotional for me because it was my father, but more importantly, the commitment that he had for Heinzville and Liberty County is one of the main reasons why I'm here today. And, and my love for this place is because of him, so I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, sir, well deserved, well deserved.
He caught me off guard with that. I was trying to make another announcement. I appreciate it though. And also, Mr. Chair, the Brothers of Fire, Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, and also Jessica's Barbershop, we are doing our annual back-to-school free haircuts from, I, I mean, I'm sorry, from July twenty eighth to the thirtieth. They have time slots. I suggest if anyone who was listening or if you know anyone, to just sign up off of Eventbrite. They can follow the Facebook page, Jessica's Barbershop. And then, but the, we have it for a hundred haircuts for the kids this year with, with some great sponsorships and everything. But those slots are going pretty quickly. So if, if you know anyone in, in your church or in your community who's looking to go back to school so fresh, so clean, tell them to come see us and we'll take care of them.
So fresh, so clean.
There we go. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, board members, I know we've, I've talked about this and we all heard. We really need to go back and take a serious look at what we're gonna do with blight areas in Liberty County. Because it's getting worse. I've got a spot down, a road that's close to me. If a fire was to break out right now, you could not get to the house for the amount of stuff in the front yard, all around the side of the house. But we are sitting here continuously letting it, allowing it to happen. So I don't know, do the code enforcement officer, does she, do they get around and ride around? Or they, do they, I know they say they wait until somebody complains. But we need to look at it a little differently. Instead of just letting Liberty County becomes to be a, a dump around and around.
Have you reported it to code enforcement?
Other people has.
Other people have. Thank you, Max. Makes a difference when we do it though, so. Mr. Brown, you follow up on that? And, and we did, in fact, I heard Mayor Stacey talk about that too. So there is a, some consensus about doing that countywide. We just need to work that into some kind of, we've got so much going on, some kind of meeting settings that we address that somehow and then explore ways to fund some of that because it's gonna probably wind up being what we have to do. We were talking, we were, we were exploring how other communities address it. I remember that conversation. Then I don't, where, where did we go from there?
And there was, there was actually discussion among Chota to try to do that. And I'm not sure where they ended up with the Chota Board. But I was thinking that was what they were going to try to address also.
You still a part of that?
Yeah.
No, I'm getting you. Yeah, okay, all right. Let's follow up on that. That doesn't need to be done, our gateways, every gateway, every gateway. All right, you'll follow up. All right, that's all for the good order.
Sure.
As Commissioner Fraser said, no need to drag it out. Chair taking the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Call, call me. I, I got to run up into the church, give me a call.
Better slow down.